Good evening and welcome to the May 4th edition, uh, May 4th, 2010 of the San Bruno Planning Commission meetings. Just a quick, um, word of advice, if we could just make sure our cellphones are turned off before we get the meeting started, that would be great. And Eric, we have the roll call, please.
Commissioner Marshall.
Here.
Vice Chair Peterson.
Here.
Chair Chase.
Here.
Commissioner Biassadi.
Here.
And Commissioner Johnson.
Here.
Commissioners Mishra and Samut called earlier and they will not be able to make it tonight.
Okay, thank you. Uh, let's see, Commissioner Biassadi, would you lead us in Pledge of Allegiance?
Of course. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have, um, two sets of minutes that need to be approved, the first being March, excuse me, March 2nd, uh, 2010, and the second being March 16th, 2010. We'll take the March 2nd one first. Is there a motion to approve?
I move that we approve the minutes of March 2nd.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed? Okay, the minutes are approved on March 2nd. Next one, March 16th.
Motion to approve that we approve the minutes of March 16th?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed? None, okay. So they are approved and passed. Next item on our agenda would be Communications. Do we have any communications?
Just our standard that you could find the E-Pack and online at sanbruno.ca.gov. It's all there, the agenda as well as the staff report.
Thank you, Aaron. Okay, now would be a time for a public comment on items that are not listed on the agenda. So if somebody here has something they would like to bring forth, it's not agendized, if that's the right word, um, come now and seeing none, okay, I'll close that. Um, announcement, uh, see, now we're gonna go to Conflict of Interest.
Yeah, item two, I'm gonna recuse myself.
Item two, okay. Thank you. All right, well, now the first item, if you will, is 2501 Trenton Avenue. Uh, this is a request for a use permit to allow an addition which increases the gross floor area by greater than 50 percent, and would exceed 55 percent floor area ratio per sections 12-230B1 and 12-230B2 of the San Bruno Municipal Code. Lisa, report, please.
Thank you. Uh, good evening. The item before you is a request for a conditional use permit, and as introduced, there are two reasons for the use permit. One is that it's an increase greater than 50 percent, and the second is that it does exceed the floor area standard for the property. The applicant is requesting a first and second story addition to the existing single-story home. The addition would be 888 square feet in area, and that would result in the total floor area for the home at 2,569 square feet. Uh, the property would include six bedrooms, four bathrooms, a kitchen, living room, and dining room. Um, the second floor is, um, does also have a rear deck on it. This item was discussed before the Architecture Review Committee at its March meeting, and at that meeting, we did have one neighbor express concern with the property. Um, specifically was concerned with how the addition would impact, um, his home with the light with the second story, as well as kind of the mass as you were entering the property. Um, as you noted from your site inspection, many of the properties on this block have side entrances, um, and so the addition would be to the side where his main, uh, his front door is to his, his home. Uh, the applicant does propose, um, some modifications to the front of the house that would include a new front porch and reorienting the door to the front of the home as opposed to the side as it is now. Following the Architecture Review Committee, Aaron Ackman and I met with the applicant and their architect to discuss some of the concerns expressed at the meeting, and they have agreed to make some further revisions since the Architecture Review Committee to lower the height of the front element above, um, this, the vaulted living room, to have a lower roofline at that side that also does have a lower, um, view as, as, uh, when viewed from the neighboring property, so it does reduce, uh, that perceived bulk and the, and the impact from their property. They also agreed to reduce the size of the window at the second-story nursery, and that was another concern expressed by that neighbor. Um, so staff does appreciate the steps taken by the applicant to address those concerns and, uh, meet the recommendations of staff.
Thank you.
Um, staff is supportive, I'm sorry, of the use permit, would have, be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, are you done now? Sorry, didn't mean to jump the gun.
That's okay.
Through the chair.
Go ahead.
I'd just like to reiterate what Lisa said and compliment the homeowners as well as the architect in responding to some of the neighbors' concerns, as well as, uh, responding to some of our comments. I think they, they went a long way to make it a better addition for the overall neighborhood.
Great, thank you, and thank them. Okay, uh, does any, uh, any of the commissioners have any questions of staff? Okay, seeing none at this time, um, would the applicant please step forward and, um, give us your name and, street, please?
Good evening, uh, my name is Louis Robles, I'm the architect for the project. And basically, uh, I don't know if you got a chance to look at, uh, what we were proposing, and if you have any questions regarding that, Lisa did an excellent job presenting the project. The only thing that I say regarding the conditions number 15 is about the tree, we already have a street tree there that was planted three years ago by the, uh, city of San Bruno. You can see that on page, uh, on page, uh, let me see.
Page eight.
On page 12, also, you can see the photograph that, you can see the tree in the front. It's a evergreen pear tree, so it always stays green. And it's about 14 feet tall. So that's one of the items that we would like to say that if, if we could just put on our plans when we sign this off that we already have done this.
Okay.
And then, yeah, basically, I think that was about it. If you have any questions regarding the project, I'm here to answer.
And now is the time, do any commissioners have any, uh, questions of?
Through the chair.
Commissioner Peterson.
To address the applicant's question about that tree, staff, can you give an opinion on that, or do you have to examine the tree closer?
What I think we could do is, we could meet with pub, the Public Works Director and see if there's, if this is a circumstance where the requirement can be waived. It's a standard condition within the municipal code, um, that anytime you improve your home by more than 25 percent, you have to plant a street tree. So we'll see a situation when a recent street tree has been planted, that requirement can be waived.
Thank you.
Any other questions of either staff or the applicant? Okay, seeing none, I will now open it up to a public comment. Anybody from the public wishing to, uh, speak on this item, please come to the podium and state your name and street. Seeing nobody's rushing there, I will close public comment and bring it back to the commissioners for discussion action. Anything?
Uh, through the chair.
Yes, Commissioner Biassadi.
Exhibit D says, uh, San Mateo County Checklist, Sustainable Checklist. Um, I want to compliment the applicant on, uh, the ideas that they're gonna, you know, incorporate into this project, and is this something that we created, or is this, uh, from the applicant?
The applicant did submit this.
I like that.
Yeah.
If we could do that with the other applications, that would be great as well.
Right.
Especially where it includes, uh, it says these items will become part of the building permit. I think that's a great idea, having them accept that.
Right.
Okay.
Any other activity here from the commissioners? Okay.
Through the chair.
Commissioner Peterson.
Uh, I'd like to move that the Planning Commission approve use permit 10-3 based on findings of fact 1 through 6 and conditions of approval 1 through 24.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second, just, I have a question on the, the motion, there's that issue on, uh, where you have number 15.
The city's gonna, there's still a condition in there, the city can waive it if, if they feel needed.
So should we have that so noted then, and?
No, it's still a condition.
It'll be noted in the minutes, and I'll, I'll meet with the Public Works Director and Louis, um, next week to, to go over it.
Okay. All right, we have a motion.
On the subject, I'd like to, to, uh, put in the record that, uh, I was at the Architectural Review Meeting, uh, we went over this quite a bit, and brought up a number of issues that I think the designer and applicant, uh, dealt with energetically with staff and with the neighbors, and, uh, there's relatively little comment on this item at this time, but I think it's because of the heavy homework. Thank you.
Through the chair.
Yes.
I do have a question. In the staff report, it indicated that there were, that the applicant is willing to reduce the size now. Does that reflect it in the plans, or is that, it's fully reflected?
Yes.
Okay, I just wanted that clarification.
Okay, we do have a motion and a second on the floor. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed? Okay, there are none. Thank you. It passes, and there's a 10-day appeal period, and you guys should be congratulated on a good job. You did a good job.
Well done.
Thank you. Okay. Next item is request for a use permit to allow onsite consumption of alcoholic beverages in wine tasting room per chapters 12.84.210 of the San Bruno zoning ordinance, and this would be, uh, located at Lenardi's supermarket. Staff report, please.
Thank you, and good evening. As stated, the applicant has applied for a use permit to allow onsite consumption of alcohol in conjunction with a proposed wine room. The subject site is the existing Lenardi's Market, which is located on the corner of San Bruno Avenue and Glenview Drive. Um, as you know, there's, there's been a lot of activity at Lenardi's over the past few years. Recently, they updated the appearance of the facade, also included new landscaping throughout the site, and most recently, they completed a 5000, 5800 square foot addition to the rear of the existing building. Um, regarding the wine room, um, the wine room itself will be located inside of the building, and will be 10, and will measure 10 feet wide by 10 feet deep. The current business hours of operation are 7:30 a.m. to 7:30 p.m., Monday through Saturday, and 7:30 a.m. to 7:30 p.m. on Sundays. The applicant has indicated that tasting will take place during normal business hours and will typically take place during the afternoon hours. It is important to note that Lenardi's currently has a type 20 ABC license which permits the sale of wine and beer for off-site consumption. Um, Lenardi's has since applied for a type 42 ABC license which permits the onsite consumption of beer and wine, and that's why we're here tonight, strictly for the onsite consumption of alcohol. Um, it is important to note, to note that the police department has reviewed the proposal and found that the new wine room would not have any negative impacts on the existing business. Um, staff has included the standard conditions of approval within the staff report and finds that the proposal, um, will be a good addition to the existing market and recommends that the Planning Commission approve the use permit based on findings of fact 1 through 5 and conditions of approval 1 through 11. I'm available to answer any questions.
Thanks, Matt. Okay, do the commissioners have any questions of staff? No, okay, thank you. Um, at this point in time, with the applicant, please step forward and state your name and...
Hi, Mike, can you, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Hello? Yeah, okay. My name is Rick Call, I'm here representing Lenardi's, and I really don't have anything to add to his presentation. I'm just here for answers, if you have any questions to answer.
All right, thank you. So, bring it back to the commissioners, do we have any questions of, uh, the applicant?
Through the chair.
Commissioner.
Can you describe how the, that, the tasting room would operate? What does it look like? Not so much an appearance, but how do you see that functioning number of people?
Well, it's, it's toward the back of the store, and it's a 10 by 10-foot, it's squared off, and no one's allowed to go outside of that little area with, with a, an open container of wine. They have to stay inside that little area.
So is it a tasting room, or is it a place to have a, um, a beverage?
Well, it's basically a tasting room. If you, if you've been in the grocery store where they've had these little square 10 by 10 areas where you can go inside that room and taste the wine, and then you have to leave the, the glass, if it's empty, or, or in there, and then you have to continue shopping.
Mm-hmm.
So, so there's, no one's allowed to wander around the store with an, with an open container. They have to stay inside that place, and it'll be policed by Lenardi's and, and the wineries that'll have that, they're, uh, a wine rep.
And so it'll be monitored by Lenardi's, but it will be a private vendor in doing that, or do they?
Some, most likely, yes, but sometimes the, uh, the vendors won't be there, but the, the Lenardi's staff will, will, usually the manager, assistant manager will be there monitoring them.
And what if, um, a client wanted to, or a customer wanted to go in there and they had a child with him? How does that work?
Uh, the child's not allowed inside because it's basically an area where only 20, people 21-years of old or older have, can go inside.
So there'll be signs posted that no one under 21 would be?
Yes, and there's also signs posted that no one can leave with an open container.
And what time do you anticipate that this tasting room would be, uh, open?
Was, was.
What are the hours of operation?
Um, well, it's most likely in the afternoon, and it's not gonna be on an everyday basis, it's gonna be when the wine we usually show up and say, "We want to do it at a certain time," and it's usually done in the afternoon, like it says in the staff report.
I didn't see in the application, although I might, might have been oversight of my part, uh, were there hours attached to?
Yes.
To that? I knew there were hours of operation for Lenardi's.
There's no specific, there's no specific hours, but.
I didn't see that, I just saw hours.
The hours of the store.
Right, I saw that.
Were listed, but there's no, there's, there's gonna be, I don't know if random is the right word, there'll probably be a schedule of, you know, certain winery, Crystal Springs Wine we might show up at 3 o'clock, and it'll be posted for a week or two if people want to try that kind of wine, or Wayne Brothers, or whatever winery decides to have a taste.
So that, would you be opposed if we, if there was a condition that indicated a specific timetable after noon, after lunchtime, it would be open, or, you know, whereas the hours at 7 o'clock in the morning, I find it hard for us to think that someone would be there.
No, that, I don't see that that would be a problem, no, not at all.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Sure, thank you.
Any other questions of the applicant?
Through the chair.
Commissioner Peterson.
Uh, do you have any plans to monitor the amount that each customer consumes during the day?
Well, you mean, as far as, you know, if a guy comes in and tastes some wine, then leaves, and then comes back and tastes some more, I prob, I probably think it's just a one-time shot, where the guy can taste a wine in one particular, it's not gonna be a whole glass, it'll be probably an inch up so they can get a taste of it, it's not like they're gonna, it's just not something to drink, it's something to taste. So a client, if, for example, if he's in the store and he's always interested about this $30 bottle of wine, maybe he can try, sample that wine without having to buy it to see if he likes it.
So you wouldn't see it as even being a possibility that any customer would consume, uh, six ounces or more of, of wine?
And you would, no, I, I don't see that, no. It would be monitored where if somebody wants to, you know, it's not like you go to some of these wine tastings where it's just free pour, it's not like that.
Thank you very much.
So one guy, if he's, he probably wouldn't be able to come back in, he says, "You already had your taste." He wouldn't be able to come back in.
Thank you.
Any other questions of the applicant? Okay, thank you very much. Seeing, uh, we have no more questions, I'm going to now open it up to, uh, public comment. Anybody from the public wishing to, uh, speak on this item, if you please come to the podium? Okay, seeing none, I will now close the, uh, public comment time, bring it back to the commissioners for discussion, action.
Through the chair.
Commissioner Peterson.
I, uh, move that the Commission approve use permit 10-9 based on findings of fact 1 through 5 and conditions of approval 1 through 11.
Second. Okay, there is a, a motion and a second. Uh, Commissioner Johnson did have, uh...
I'd like to propose, uh, through the chair, that there be some consideration to discussing the hours of, you know, after 11 or after 12, I'm, you know, I, I'd like to, to add to that, uh, motion, that restriction of hours. I'm trying to think through, you know, what's a reasonable amount, and, and, you know, Aaron, this is new to us, so I don't want to be, um, unrealistic or restrictive in areas that may not be reasonable for the applicant by any means. However, I'd like to at least, is there any, um, experience that you have had with other projects that are in a, that are in sort of a public groceries, grocery, grocery, uh, customer area?
The only other one that we've approved in San Bruno is at Beverages &amp; More. Um, it was a little bit different in that they had specific wine tasting times, but I don't think we put a limit on the, the amount of hours for that application. Um, of course, that's somewhat different because it's a store where people go to buy alcoholic beverages rather than a overall grocery store.
And they don't open at 7:30 in the morning?
No. They probably open at 10.
Yeah, it's 10 and then occasionally it's 11.
Yeah.
Through the chair.
Commissioner Marshall.
Not to interrupt, but just to put my, I don't think we need to regulate the time, I don't think Lenardi's is gonna go up there at 7:30 in the morning and serve wine to, to the people. Uh, if we regulate the time, there may be a, a Sunday where there's a 49er game and they, and some champagne vendor may want to come and sample champagne from mimosos and, you know, one time, and I, I think it's, it's too much of a, I mean, I, I don't think it's needed, to be honest.
I'm just raising the question, just for discussion.
No, I hear you, no, I hear you. But I, I, my, my opinion, I don't think we need it.
Okay.
Okay, so right now, we do have a motion and a second on the floor. I'm gonna call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed? None, so it does pass, there will be a 10-day appeal period, and I'm sure the Lenardi's will police it quite well. Thank you. Okay, moving on, the next item on our agenda, 714 Fourth Avenue. Uh, this is a request for a use permit and parking exception to legalize a religious facility within the R1 Residential Single Family Zoning District per sections 12-96, 60-C1, and 12-100-120 of the San Bruno Municipal Code. Staff report, please.
Thank you. Um, as noted in the staff report, staff is requesting a continuation, um, of this item to a future Planning Commission meeting. The reason being is we need to do, to do additional research on the religious facility and the possible impacts to the residential neighborhood, uh, prior to this going forward, and thus, uh, where we're able to give a recommendation to the Planning Commission. So, I, given, I, the timeframe is most likely at least a month from now, and we will renotice all of the neighborhood, um, when that goes forward.
Very good, thank you. Okay, well, you know what, I'm gonna open up the public comment. Is anybody here for the public wishing to speak on this particular item? If you would please come to the podium and...
And through the chair, since the applicant is not here, and we want to make sure that he has all his rights, I would, I would urge the Planning Commission not to respond too much to the public comment tonight, and leave that for the time when staff actually gives a report, as well as the applicant is here to present this item.
I think we can handle that very well, thank you.
That's my Pamela quote for tonight.
Hi, uh, my name is Jean Schmidt, and I live at, um, on Third Avenue, um, and of the area that, where the religious facility is, um, oh, thanks, uh, is applying for this permit or legalization of their, of what they're doing. Um, we, um, are near the, the air, 300-feet boundary of, of people or neighbors that are around the area, um, we're one of them, and I was hoping more would come tonight, maybe it's the second one, but my, our concerns are, uh, the traffic that it's causing, the congestion, the unsafeness of our neighborhood with the, the amount of people and the cars that are coming. They're doing this on, um, a basis from what we understand and see, um, five to seven days of the week at different times of the day, and, um, we're very concerned regarding, um, this, uh, religious facility that, that's trying to, to get legalized. Um, there's littering, there's, um, uh, excessive parking, excessive, uh, what do you call it? The, oh, vehicles, business vehicles coming, limousines, cabs, airport shuttle, um, vans coming in, and, um, we wanted to express our concerns tonight because, um, we don't feel that our resident, residential area is really geared for something like this because it makes it very hazardous for us, all during the week, seven days a week, different times of the day, and, um, it, uh, makes it very hard for the people that, that live in the area or around this facility, so we wanted to, um, express how we're feeling about this and, and hoping that they take all this into consideration before granting, you know, them to have permission to do this or to legalize the facility. So, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Through the chair.
Commissioner Peterson.
Should I ask you a question?
Sure.
Uh, as a commissioner, I was under the impression that we were hearing an application to, uh, provide a use permit for a religious facility. Are you saying it's actually operating now?
Oh, yes, it has been for, as far as I can remember, um, I'd say over, up to about two, approximately two years that they've been doing this.
Thank you.
Uh-huh, you're welcome.
Okay, anybody else from the public wishing to, uh, speak on this, please? If you would, uh, come to the microphone and state your name, street?
Uh, French Schmidt, I'm her husband. And I have two other things to add. Uh, as you're well aware, Caltrans is start, starting a big project in the area. They're starting to put in detours, which are gonna come through the avenues. That, and on our corner, we live on the corner of Third and Pine, we have a four-way stop, and when they're in the area, it rarely gets used, so it's extremely unsafe. So.
A four-way stop r- rarely gets used, is that correct?
Yeah, they just run it, they ignore it completely.
Okay, thank you. And seeing that there is, uh, nobody else from the public here, uh, I will close public comment, and we'll bring it back to, uh, commissioners for discussion on this, even though I know we're not, you know, we don't really have a staff report or anything like that, so, but if anybody would like to...
Through the chair. Commissioner Marshall. I'd like to move that we continue this item to?
A future Planning Commission.
A future Planning Commission.
Okay, we have a motion.
I like the second hand.
There is a second, pardon me?
Some discussion, no question.
Um, now would be the time to do it, there is a motion and a second.
There's just a question for our, coming for staff, and, uh, when the, when it comes to far, I said it could include as much information around, um, the specific, I know you're extremely thorough, and I'm gonna preface that, any, um, specifics, you know, we have had an experience with another establishment and, and, uh, new things came about through that process, and so it would be really important to have as much detail, um, maybe even a written report or letter that's documented from the, from the applicant, so that we have a starting point, a reference point, and if there, if we anticipate an audience here, I'd like to be able to at least have a reference point so we can read in advance, uh, from the applicant, and to see if there's, um, you know, areas that, to take a look at.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
And, uh, I would like to add one thing, if, if what we heard was, was accurate as far as a religious, um, group being, you know, for the last two years, operating out of there, perhaps we should look into that as well, and, you know, figure out what's up with that. Okay, so we have a...
Through the chair.
Yes, Commissioner Peterson.
Uh, may I, would you like to go ahead?
No.
Oh, good. I have, uh, the observation that I believe the residents of the area have the same rights under the city's regulation as a religious facility, and since a religious facility's operation has not been applied for or legalized at this time, my question is, is the city taking any action to ask them to locate someplace else until their facility is legalized?
We'll, we'll report back to you in the, the full staff report, uh, when we come back. There, there are a lot of details that we'll, we'll put in that report, and we all are, we're exploring all legal options at this point, and that's part of the reason that we're asking for a continuation.
This is sort of, uh, comes to mind that it's similar to applications like one on San Mateo Avenue to tear out part of a constructed building. It's not a, not a, uh, application that's enjoyable to go through, and so I would hope staff would take any actions that are appropriate in the meantime.
Any other, are you?
I'm through, thank you.
Any other comments from the commissioners? Okay, we have a motion and a second on the floor. Uh, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye. Those opposed? Saying none. We will continue this to a future Planning Commission meeting, with I'm sure an A1 staff report with all the details. Thank you. Okay, uh, next item, uh, city staff discussion.
I'd like to select the members for the May 13th Architecture Review Committee meeting.
I can hear that.
Commissioner Johnson.
Hi, Ben.
Commissioner Biassadi. Commissioner Marshall. There, there is a chance that there will not be any, any agenda items that night, so, so everyone can have the night off.
Finally, I finally thought, you know, I may have a non-teachy night.
We may. And then the two other, the, the next, just two weeks from now, we'll be hearing the Treetops remodel application. So it's a, that's the reason we had this early, earlier May meeting tonight, so we could isolate that, that one agenda item, since there'll probably be some neighbors here. And then you will also be getting a presentation on the grade separation project at the next meeting and a full update on that. As you know, the first, as, as the neighbor mentioned, the beginning of the project started this week. So you'll be able to see what the timeline is moving forward and what the major steps are moving forward.
So both of those will be on our next Planning Commission meeting?
Correct.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm going to withdraw my name for Architectural Review because this Housing Leadership Council seminar, I think it's on May 13th as well. I think I'd like to attend that. So I'll, I'll do a standby if we.
All right. I will be at that one, too.
Okay.
Well, if we do have, need somebody else for that part review, I'll stand in for it.
Through the chair.
Commissioner Marshall.
Erin, can you give us an update on our newest Bay Hill tenant?
Sure. We received confirmation that, as you know, Gap International, throughout the past decade and a half, has had their international headquarters within San Bruno in two buildings. The building with the green roof on Cherry Avenue that now YouTube is in and fully occupies that building. There is a second Gap building, a five-story office building on the corner of Cherry and San Bruno Avenue, the newest office building there, former post office site. And Gap's employee numbers have been dwindling there over the years. They're down to several hundred employees. Walmart.com signed a lease for that, for that building, bringing about 1,200 new employees to the city of San Bruno and to, to the Bay Hill office area. So they, according to the newspapers and from what I've heard is they, they will sign a lease and begin moving people in about a year from now. So for local businesses, it's good to see occupancy rates that have been affected because of the, because of the economic conditions. Those office occupancy rates start to go up once again.
So does that mean, will, will Gap be there at all or not at all?
No, Gap is now consolidating their offices all into San Francisco.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Any other discussion from commissioners? Seeing none. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you.